I'd like to call to me in order, roll call.
Mr. Zawada. Mr. Brophy. Ms. Duroff. Ms. Duroff. Mrs. Kratz. Ms. Nyman. Mrs. Scott. Mr. Brad Updegrove. Mr. Roger Updegrove. Mr. Panarello.
Here.
The board held an executive session on Tuesday, April 9th, 2023, after their meeting. Their meeting was legal. It lasted 30 minutes. We also had a meeting today, April 22nd. The meeting lasted 40 minutes.
Student representative report.
Okay. Good evening, board members and meeting attendees. We were finally able to hold a high school luncheon last month. Along with this luncheon, Liliana was also able to participate in the Students of Influence Day at Middle School West.
Last month, I participated in the Middle School West Impact Day, led by former BASH graduate Scott Haight and Katie McLaughlin. The Middle School Impact Day, held at both East and West, engaged students in discussion around leadership and communication skills, while participating in purposeful movement to keep students engaged. Over 100 students participated, as well as staff members and Impact Club representatives from the high school. A favorite activity for many students from the day included building a person and putting them through several challenges to represent resilience and perseverance throughout life. Students were encouraged to take the lessons learned throughout the day and apply them to their lives, hopefully becoming strong leaders.
And as for the luncheon, we had a nice mix of students attend with students of different ages or different grades attending. To start, I asked them generally how their classes were going, and overall, there was very good positive feedback. Students said that there were classes they expected to be challenging, so they weren't, they were not surprised when going into the course, and vice versa. They said the classes they expected to be on the easier side were, so no one was really overwhelmed. I also talked about clubs, and I asked about extracurricular activities, and most students answered that they have a good knowledge on what clubs and sports are offered here at BASH. However, a student new to the school this year said it was a little difficult for her to learn about extracurriculars, so she requested just maybe a little more information as pushed to new students. We also had quite a few students attend Impact Day this month.
Last month, BASH held their third annual Impact Day. We had over 70 students, staff, members, and Impact Club members. When asked what students learned from Impact Day, some responses included, "I learned to be more open and more confident in talking to people that I might not know." Something important that I learned today was trying to be more open-minded. "I feel like today allowed me to realize some of the judgments I would make without really realizing it." Impact Club facilitated a follow-up meeting with some participants in the day in order to discuss how they can apply action plans created at BASH. Overall, it was a positive experience for everyone involved.
And during the luncheon, after our discussion of Impact Day, we discussed online courses with our luncheon attendees. There were pretty good responses, with only one request being a little more supervision and guidance in these courses. They also found that the Smart Futures/EverFi assignments for homeroom, they were valuable but a tad bit redundant. They liked the content and just wished there was maybe a more abridged version. The last thing we talked about was the hallways, and just that students see many of their peers up and about in the hallways because they have to walk quite a bit to reach the bathroom. They just hope that soon we can phase back in opening all the bathrooms. Overall, we had some really great conversations with minimal issues being identified. We're hoping to keep the positivity going next month when we have another luncheon with the middle schools.
In other BASH news, the Student Diversity Union hosted Culture Day. This event allows students to take a deeper look at culture from the perspective of their very own peers. SDU and BASH students and staff facilitated a variety of tables on different countries spanning each of the seven continents. Students moved throughout the gym, receiving passport stamps at each of the countries they stopped at. This event was a huge success, and we would like to thank Mrs. Sebrow, BASH Administration, and the members of Student Diversity Union for making this possible.
All right. So before we end our report, I want to take this opportunity to thank the board and our administration for giving students the opportunity to travel with their peers to other states and countries for a truly unforgettable experience. Specifically, being able to participate in both the senior class trip to Disney and the World War II trip to Europe gave me experiences with my friends that I may never have the chance to get again. Seeing my friends' reactions to Tower of Terror and being able to walk the River Thames with them are memories that I am grateful we have as a school and that the school allows us to have. So I want to thank everyone.
That's all we have for tonight. We want to thank everyone for listening, and we hope everyone had a great spring break.
No one has signed up for public comm period number one, so I'll be looking for the approval of the April 9th, 2024 committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Zawada seconds.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr.
Yes.
At this time, Mr. Sparks, would you come to the podium, please, and give us an update on DevaPAR and the experiences that the high school is having? Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to go through approximately 90-day reflection of the impact that DevaPAR Consulting has had on the high school, starting with the experience that Dr. Cindy Marzewski has been able to provide us. If you look at her resume, she is a very well-qualified administrator with over 35 years serving the Berks County. She's been an educator, assistant principal, a building principal. She's been an IU coordinator for curriculum and director. She's been also held as an assistant superintendent, as well as a superintendent. Her 35 years of a very diverse background has been extremely helpful for us going through quite the tremendous change within the high school building administration. When you look at the administration at the bottom in particular, this is the total months of administrative experience at the high school that my administrative team currently has as of today. Dr. Burge, who's our longest and most tenured, has approximately 14 months of administrative experience at the high school. Mr. Howe, who's a staple of our community and has been in the district for several years now, has only been an administrator for about two years at the high school. And Mr. Venner, who's a new hire for us, who started about two months ago, is experiencing his second month at the high school. With that being said, there's not a lot of experience that's been provided at the high school. So having somebody from DevaPAR who has already a tremendous experience and a vast knowledge of different expectations has been awesome for me, as well as my team, to bounce different ideas around. One of the things that we looked at is the impact of the peer collaboration, not just as administrators, but also with Cindy, to be able to go with some ideas to finish this year, but also to put us in a better position for next year. Some of the ideas that we came up with and implemented early in the year was the teacher hallway monitors. We're fortunate that we were able to have a very supportive high school teaching staff that was able to help us out and to take different stations in the hallway, which have been very impactful with removing kids from kind of wandering around in between different periods and keeping an extra set of eyes on the hallways, especially during the cafeteria and the lunches where we have, you know, 500 kids in our cafeteria at one particular time. In addition, we started looking at changes for our schedule for next year. This year, we currently have our PLCs built into our prep periods, where each subject area has aligned prep periods as much as possible. So if math, for example, if they have a dozen teachers, they might have three preps with as many teachers with those common preps as possible. The idea is that this was part of our action plan, focusing on horizontal alignment, and it was very important that we set it up that way for this current school year. But as we go into the next school year, we're looking at changing that up so we can have more interdepartment collaboration, which will allow us to kind of open up our schedule more and provide additional study halls that, right now, are kind of tied together because of those PLCs. So this gives us a little bit more flexibility and freedom. The impact and the continued conversation that Cindy has been able to provide us with scheduling has been invaluable. Her experience, having built multiple schedules for multiple school districts, allowing me to kind of express my ideas to help improve our building for next year and really maximize the efficiency of our staff, she's been an outstanding sounding board to help us do that. So we're really looking forward to next year with some of the different things we get put into place that's going to make our school safer, but also provide more support for our students and offering them more study halls than we can currently offer at this time. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussion about the homeroom advisory period for next year and our bell schedule, and we began planning for that already this year. We've had a tremendous amount of support from our teachers who are interested, especially our music teachers or art teachers, teachers who have already started to kind of take ownership of what this looks like for the following school year. They began reaching out to our eighth-grade buildings, trying to find out the students who are interested in arts, so we can set up grade-level-specific art homerooms for the following years, to give those kids who are truly passionate an opportunity to be with their peers, again, from two different middle schools, but also have an art teacher kind of supervise them, which really helped with their growth as they go through our high school. The same is true with music. Music's also one of those areas that's tough because it's, sometimes it's hard to fit in their schedule. Those kids are in TSA and they're in FBLA. But we've already tried to start identifying some of the larger homerooms. And what's nice with the way our building is set up is that we have our music teachers all kind of in the same block. So if you are in chorus, or if you're in instrument, you could kind of shift around within those homerooms just by going through a door or so, which gives a lot of flexibility for our kids being all in that area, and our teachers have been very supportive with that. So again, really kind of looking forward to what that can offer us for next year, while continuing to provide supports that we've already have established for our current school year using our flex scheduling. One of the other things that's really interesting is, we started to look at our school counseling structure and the responsibilities. We have had a significant increase in safety saves this year. The mental health of our students is always something that we're extremely concerned about, and we've seen more of that coming out of this school year. And we really wanted to kind of evaluate what our counselors are doing, what are the responsibilities, what can we do to take maybe some of those responsibilities off them and shift them around throughout our building, so it gives them more opportunity to meet with our students. Right now, we're very reactive. Our kids come down, they're in need, we provide them support, but we're looking for, what can we do differently, and what can we move towards next year where we can have our counselors go into those longer homerooms and have group sessions, or be able to provide support, or talk about, you know, course selection, or other important things that are coming up in our building, and really get them into the classrooms more so that they're taking a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach. So that's some of the things that we're looking forward to for next year. And then, obviously, going through our schedule right now, we have scheduled every single department up to this point. We have approximately, I think, I think it's probably about 200 classes roughly that we offer for next year for the upcoming schedule, so there's a lot of work still that needs to be done, but we have a lot of those foundational pieces started already by meeting with our department chairs and building kind of our blank schedule. So if you saw the emails, those of you who have parents and your students in here about the course selections are available on infinite campus, make sure you check those out. You have about three weeks before you can't make any changes, but if you do want to make changes, now's a good opportunity for your child to have a conversation with their school counselor about the selection that they made for the upcoming school year. One of the other things that kind of spawned from one of the PAC meetings that I've had with Mr. Palladino is, I was at Springford School District at their high school, and I was kind of amazed that when the bell schedule changed, the kids in the hallways, it wasn't nearly as loud as ours. And I was kind of curious, you know, why, why is this happening? What is, what are we doing differently? What are they doing differently? So we were fortunate that my administrative team, as well as Cindy, were able to reach out to Springford. I contacted their principal and said, "Look, I noticed you guys have school while we're on spring break. Would it be okay if I brought my administrative team over there to meet with your admin team while you have kids in the building, so they can see and experience the same thing that I did?" So we went over there, I think it was on the Monday of spring break, and we talked about a lot of different ideas, ideas that they had, questions about our schedule. Some of the questions that they had were, "Hey, what does your internship program look like? What does your part-time program look like?" Because they don't offer that. So that kind of spawned some of our continued conversation. We looked at the counseling house structure, which is a structure that we're trying to really push forward for next year, where rather than just having six or seven counselors spread out across the entire alphabet, you have an administrator, one of the grade-level principals, and two counselors that rotate through with the students from 10th grade, 11th grade, to 12th grade, but then all of them provide support for the 9th grade. So you're really kind of front-loading that 9th grade support and hope that it pays itself off in dividends as you go through the school year, while we continue to build those rapport with your students. So that's something that we're in the process right now. We're also looking at improvements to our student handbook, particularly on the cell phone policy and electronic devices. I think this is something that is an area that we need to revisit and to reemphasize the importance of this for the upcoming school year. So there's some behind-the-scenes work that's going on right now to try to strengthen what that looks like for the upcoming school year. In addition, we talked about what progressive discipline looks like from their school, as well as from our school, and there's some stark differences that they have compared to ours. One of the biggest challenges or the differences that they have with their building is that they are a 10, 11, 12 building, which is obviously different than us having 9 through 12 at the high school. They also have a house system where they have the 12th graders on their own side, and then 10, 11 is on the other side. So there's not a whole lot of intermixing elects you're going into some of your elective classes. I'm not, I don't think we're at that position where we can do that, at least not for the upcoming school year, but it is an interesting concept to think about as far as having houses within our building. One of the other things we looked at is kind of a continuation of our program, a study presentation that we had earlier in the fall, with looking at going towards that eight-period bell schedule and how they did lunches, because quite honestly, that was one of the things I was curious about. Again, the difference is, is their cafeteria can hold over 100 more students than ours, so they can hold 650 at a time, where our cafeteria maxed out is about 5 and 1/4, 550. So having, again, three grade levels, having a much larger cafeteria, it makes it a lot easier to try to build in your schedule what those lunches look like, so they're not a 50-minute lunch period, which I don't think any administrator would want. Looking for the following, where obviously we're continuing to have continued administrative discussion and collaboration, but this is kind of a different avenue that opened up, and it was really great to have Cindy there, a part of us, having those conversations, and somebody who has so much experience in this county to be able to go into Montgomery County. Kind of looking at the finishing up of this school year, I, again, kind of envisioned that from now until roughly that first Thursday in June is probably when our connection or relationship with DevaPAR would, will probably cease. We've had a lot of work to do still in our scheduling, which I would like her to be part of, as we continue to refine what that looks like for the upcoming school year. We're starting some of our committees with some of our teachers next Friday to look at the electronic devices and the cell phone policies, and then also preparing our new administrators for what the end-of-year supervision meetings look like, the expectations, what the preparedness that our teachers need to have, the dialogues, the conversations, those professional meetings to help continue their professional growth, not only for this year, but also for the upcoming school year. And then finally, what all of us are excited for is planning for graduation, which is only about six and a half weeks away. So this is kind of a timeline as far as where we are and what we're looking forward to continue to do. Do want to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity. This was help that was absolutely needed, given the situation at the high school. So from the school board, thank you so much. Our central administration has been extremely supportive. The Office of Teaching and Learning, I know Mrs. Landis and Mrs. Towne have been in our buildings a lot to help us and support us, as well as DevaPAR, and most importantly, Cindy has been awesome. She's jumped in immediately to help us, and she's been so positive and supportive throughout the process. So thank you.
FYI, just to let you know, the state does have a committee right now negotiating for phone policy and electronic policy, so hopefully it won't put you guys out on the, and they, and they realize how important it is. So it's, it's being moved pretty quick. But, you know, if, if somebody
Why are we putting more study halls in?
So by study halls, it's Thank you. The study halls are more than study halls. They're opportunities for tutoring. So right now, because of our schedule limitations, I only can offer about two or three study halls or tutoring periods per, per cycle day, per period. Next year, our goal is to have possibly about five to six areas, so that we can get more tutoring available for our students who need it to provide more support, while we're also looking to put in the things into place, such as our homework intervention center, which hasn't existed in about two years. So it's more than just a study hall.
Okay. If there's tutoring, that, that's one thing, but I, I would be hesitant to put more study halls in there, because the kids are going to use them if you put them in. The other question I had was on scheduling. Did, don't we have a firm, or didn't we have a firm prior to, that they did the scheduling, and then the school just went over it and kind of tweaked it?
In my Ms. Duroff, we're going to get on the same page one of these times here, I promise. In my experience, the building administration has always built a schedule, at least for the last six years that I've been there. I would love, that'd be great, but that's never happened.
Okay. First of all, if you could send us all a copy of that presentation, I would appreciate that as one. And I too was concerned about more study halls. In fact, at the beginning of next year, I would appreciate it if the board could go in and see what's going on, because I'm really concerned about that first period, or whatever you're going to call it, homeroom, whatever. Also, the cafeteria. It's my understanding that quite a few people are not even in the cafeteria. They don't feel comfortable in the cafeteria. They're eating elsewhere in the building.
Are you talking about students?
Yep.
Okay. There are some students who have 504s or IEPs that do have an alternative lunch setting, who prefer a smaller, more structured environment. There's also students who lost their ability to be in our cafeteria because of other disciplinary reasons. So not all lunches do take place in the cafeteria, and some are pushed out for very specific reasons. I would also say that if you look at the study hall, and you look at where a student's going to go during a free period, they're either in the cafeteria for open campus, or they're in a more structured environment. So the study halls really need to be serving as a tutoring period, but you got to keep in mind that if the kids aren't in tutoring or in a small study hall, they're going to be in a mass, open campus, and cafeteria.
No, my understanding from some students is, they're not into the small groups. They go wherever they feel comfortable, because there is no comfortable spot there for them. They feel there's no discipline going on. They feel there's definitely a lack of discipline.
Ms. This is not something that we're going to discuss in this meeting, so if there is some concerns, then please bring them to me. Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Sparks pertaining to DevaPAR?
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Sparks. Mrs. Torsia, one thing I was looking for was actual presentation from DevaPAR, on telling us what they, what they came in, what they're intending to do, our strengths, our weaknesses, where they started out, where they expect us to be. Although I appreciate the presentation there, when I'm looking for a presentation on a, on a consult, I'm looking for the, for the firm to come in here and give us their report. So when we, are we going to get that, and when should I expect that?
I'm happy to set that up with DevaPAR, and I can have Dr. Marzewski come in at the end, and to, you know, summarize all of the work that they've done, if that works. We have two more meetings in May, and then two in June, so we would have three opportunities in the next month, two months.
My turn. I'd like to see one before the end, so that we, if there's any course corrections that may, might need to be done, we have a chance to do that. And, you know, once they, once we get to the end, there's no course correction unless we want to extend their contract. So I'd much rather see something prior to that, so that we can then look if there's any course corrections or anything, any things that stand out that, that need to be addressed, and also what might be a strength that we should also continue on with. So I would rather, sooner rather than later on that.
I too thought that DevaPAR was going to be here to give their presentation of what they thought we were accomplishing, or not accomplishing, or we had strengths here and not strengths there. I mean, this was okay, but it wasn't what I was expecting.
And that is my fault, because that is not the interpretation that I received, or that I took of the request. So I have no problem in turning around and asking Dr. Marzewski from DevaPAR to come and basically do the same presentation as what Mr. Sparks has provided. The idea of working with DevaPAR was to provide supports, not to find us in, you know, being delinquent in any way. It was to be able to provide supports to our very, you know, new administration that we have in place at BASH. So Dr. Marzewski will have no problem coming out and providing that update.
And that, that's good, but I mean, I thought they would come out and say, "Yes, we found this."
That was never the intention of DevaPAR. Their, their role was to support our administration in helping them to be able to move forward with the, the lack of knowledge base in doing teacher observations, in providing much of the discussion schedule building, all of the things that none of them have done, because in the past, the past two principals, both Dr. Foley and Mrs. Evans, those were their roles. Mr. Sparks was certainly there, doing teacher observations, et cetera. So I apologize if the communication of the supports of DevaPAR to the high school were different than what was interpreted, but I have no problem, and I know that Dr. Marzewski will be more than happy to come out and to, you know, support and let you know that, as young as and new to administration as our newest assistant principals are, they're a good, solid team, and they have been, you know, quick studies, and have been moving right along, and so absolutely have no problem bringing out DevaPAR.
Maybe this is outside of the scope, but I was wondering, did, does DevaPAR have any suggestions or strategies for helping with the bathroom situation?
All right, sorry. So one of the things we first did when I started here was to look at how we can better put more people out into the hallways to help that. It's a shame that some kids are willing to destroy their own home, so to speak, to wreck their own bathroom, to rip sinks off the wall, to destroy toilets where they have to be completely removed, to be repaired. Unfortunately, that, that takes a lot of time, and sometimes it takes parts that we don't have that are on backorder. So there's a lot of things that go into, when we have to close a restroom down, it's some things that are just out of our control. So we're looking, again, from the creative creativity of scheduling for next year, how we can put more supports in place, more people in the hallways, more eyes on our, on our building to be as visible as possible, and to be more proactive rather than reactive.
On a subject real quick, if we do know who it is, what is the discipline action that would take place?
So that would fall under institutional vandalism. It's traditionally a 10-day out-of-school informal hearing that takes place, as well as charges from Officer French, and fines to replace, or as well as the labor required to replace those items. So it's a pretty significant punishment.
Just so you don't feel bad, that's nothing new to how the bathrooms closed down. I've been here a long time, and they've been closed down a lot of years. And it's why, same reason you said, that the children just don't appreciate what they have, I guess.
And tonight, I'll be giving an update on the 2024-25 proposed budget. There's nothing on tonight's agenda that will be voted on in relation to the 2024-25 proposed budget, and I will take any questions that you have. And at the end of the presentation, if I don't have the answers today, I'll respond to you in email. I'm going to review the real estate tax increase scenarios that are available for the district, review the currently proposed budgeted revenues and expenditures for 2024-25. I'm going to break the budgeted expenditures down by major function, whether it be regular education, special education, or support services. Also break it down by major objects, which will show you how much we spend in salaries and benefits, how much we spend in contracted services, and other areas. I will review some of our 2024-25 budget uncertainties, review our state funding, our history of state funding, and our projected 2024-25 state funding, review the PESR's rate history and future projections, and close with our key budgetary dates. So for the 2024-25 budget year, we have an Act I index of 6.4%. What that means is the district cannot raise taxes above that 6.4%, and we did pass a resolution earlier in the year stating that the in the year stating that the taxes would not go above that 6.4%. The 2024-25 real estate tax increase scenarios are anywhere from 0% to 6.4%. Our current millage rate is 30.814 mils. At a 3% increase, that would be 31.738 mils for real estate tax revenue of $86,719,713, and that would be a budget deficit of $1,275,766. As for the current homeowner, at a 3% increase, the monthly increase based upon our average assessment of $143,000 would be an additional $11 a month. So, that kind of shows you, from the district perspective, how much revenue we would generate off that 3% increase, and then from an individual homeowner, what that would, what that cost would be monthly to that homeowner. The fund balance impact of those real estate tax increase options are from a 6.4% increase, we would have a projected increase of fund balance of $1,587,750. At a 5% increase, we would have a projected increase in fund balance of $407,369. At 4%, we would have a decrease in fund balance of $434,199. Again, at the 3%, we would have a decrease in fund balance of $1,275,766. At 2%, we would have a decrease in fund balance of $2,117,334. At 1%, it would be a decrease in fund balance of $2,958,901, and then at a 0% increase, it would be a decrease in fund balance of $3,800,469. So, through that, you can see the impact that a tax increase would have on the district's fund balance. Our budgeted revenues for 2024-25 are currently proposed at $143,533,592. Of that, $99,336,631 is local revenue, the largest portion, again, being a real estate tax revenue. State revenue is budgeted at $42,756,961, and federal revenue is budgeted at $1,440,000. On the state revenue of $42,756,961, 27 million of that is educational subsidies. So, 27 million of that is what we can use for regular instruction, special ed instruction. We receive those dollars for strictly instruction. There are $14,539,000 that we receive for cost reimbursement. So, those are reimbursements for PISers, reimbursement for health services, reimbursement for FICA costs. That's not revenue that we can utilize to further support education. That is just reimbursing us for expenses that we are mandated to face. Then, the $1,180,000 is other state grants, the largest of which is our pre-K grant funding that we have been receiving. So, you can, I wanted to break down state revenue to show you that, yes, it was 42.7 million, but of that 42.7 million, 27 million really is geared towards actual instruction for students. An important note for 2024-25 is that the governor's proposed basic education funding of $21,346,633 is included in our 2024-25 proposed budget. Should the governor's budget not be approved in June or thereafter, that would impact our revenue sources, impact our use of fund balance. That is projected at a $2,581,367 increase over the current year. And again, local revenue in our current proposed budget is budgeted at a 3% tax increase. To touch on the governor's increase, are we on...? There you go. To touch on the governor's increase, I think it's important to discuss some of recent legal rulings, and you may have heard of the Basic Education Funding Commission. That was a bipartisan group that has been studying the funding of Pennsylvania, excuse me, public education. On February 7th of 2023, a Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court found that the current school funding is unconstitutional, and that it failed to provide a thorough and efficient system of public education as provided for in Pennsylvania's constitution. Thereafter, the Basic Education Funding Commission, which is a bipartisan team of experts and legislators, determined that Pennsylvania's school districts have been collectively unfunded by $5.4 billion. The, they proposed the state to close this gap over the next seven years by utilizing $5.1 billion to close the gap. They are also proposing a $956 million tax equity supplement over seven years for districts that have faced the steepest local tax burdens. Governor Shapiro's 2024-25 proposed budget does take a step towards to closing this funding gap, but again, it remains to be seen if that budget will be approved. But you can kind of see the work that's been going on in the background to obtain a more equitable funding system for Pennsylvania education. Well, should the governor's proposal not be approved, then we would utilize more fund balance. Our expenditures are budgeted at $144,809,358. For regular education, it is $67,638,74. For special education, we are budgeting expenditures of $24,916,909. For vocational education, it's $2,027,280. Other instructional costs are $190,156. Our pre-K program is budgeted at $541,773. Support services are budgeted at $40,345,717. Co-curricular services, which would be all our athletic and other co-curricular programs, are budgeted at $1,962,023, and our debt service and other expenditures are budgeted at $7,187,426. To break our total expenditures down by the major types of expenses, our salaries equate to $58,156,049. Personnel benefits equate to $39,612,734. Our contracted services are budgeted at $15,767,842. Purchased property services are budgeted at $998,513. Other purchase services, which would include our charter school costs, are $15,702,933. Supplies are budgeted at $6,306,119. Property improvements are budgeted at $953,413. And our debt service dues and other fees are budgeted at $7,311,755, again, for total budgeted expenditures of $144,809,358. The remaining budgetary uncertainties that we have for our 2024-25 budget year are our state funding. Again, the governor's proposed funding is regular education of $21,346,633, which is a $2.5 million increase over the current year. Special education funding is proposed at $4,913,631, which is a $214,000 increase over the current year. Charter school costs continue to be a strain on all school district budgets across the state. If there would be any kind of charter school reform, that could have a positive impact on our budgeted expenditures. Healthcare costs are a continued concern, so if we trend higher than expected, or lower than expected, that would impact our expenditures as well. And in this 2024-25 budget, we have not proposed any increases to programs, nor have we proposed to cut any programs. As we look at programs, we analyze what would the average cost be to add an additional teacher. The average cost to add an additional teacher for salaries and benefits would be about $137,000. So, those are the challenges ahead of us as we look at the 2024-25 budget, and where the uncertainty that is involved in the budget. From a historical perspective, basic education funding has grown from a level of $13.71 million in 2011-12, to a proposed level of $21.35 million in 2024-25. So, you can see through the years, it remained relatively stagnant up until about 2019-20, and then slowly started to increase. Again, we will be subject to what happens in Harrisburg to determine what we will receive in actual basic education funding. Special education funding has grown from a level in 2011-12 of $3.1 million, to a proposed level for 2024-25 of $4.9 million. Again, that will be subject to approval of the governor's proposed budget. PISers continues to be a continued cost for the district. Since 2008-9, it has grown from a level of 4.76% to a level of, excuse me, 33.9% for 2024-25, a drastic increase from 2008-9. However, the increases have leveled out since 2022-23. We're not seeing those 4% and 5% and 6% jumps that were seen in prior years. Projected for 2025-26 is a little less than a 1% increase to a 34.72% contribution. So, again, that we pay into PISers for our employees, and then we get roughly a 50% reimbursement back from the state. The key budgetary dates in front of the school board are to adopt the proposed final budget by May 30th, 2024. This would be placed on the May 14th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting for approval. We would then need to adopt the final budget by June 30th, 2024, and this would be placed on the June 25th, 2024 Board Meeting. From the point of adoption of the proposed final budget to adoption of the final budget, we could make any changes up or down in revenue or expenditures that the board chooses. We just have to, we're, by state guidelines, have to adopt that proposed final, but we can make changes before that final budget is adopted. And this was emailed out to the entire board, so if you guys want to look at it in your email and have questions.
Just one thing, you had in the presentation, $143,000 home is what it would be. Can you go back to $100,000? Because people who talk to me go with the $100,000, and then they can kind of figure it out better.
Thank you for the presentation, again. It's going to be a tough one because of Berks County also increasing, and I know Montgomery County did too, but people are really hurting out there.
Thank you for the presentation. Could you tell me if any of the groups that turn in for budgets had any money left at the, will have any money left at the end of this year?
I can run some budgetary reports and share that out with the board. We don't allow them to spend it down. We have already curtailed purchase orders for the year. We only allow those purchases that are required for the remainder of the school year. So close to the end of the school year, everything should have already been purchased for the school year. So, we've already curtailed spending, and we don't allow people to come in at the last minute and say, oh, well, I still have $5,000 left. I'm going to buy this for the next year. We don't allow that to happen, because we don't want everything spent down, when we're in this kind of situation where we're utilizing fund balance potentially.
Then where does that money get thrown back into the budget?
So, it would, in theory, go back into your fund balance.
Okay, and then are they allowed to, suppose they had like $50,000 left this year. Are they allowed to, when they put their budget in for the following year, keep it at $50,000, or they have to decrease it?
So, the budget is based upon the projected enrollment in their building.
But not for that, but I'm talking music, I'm talking sports, I'm talking all the other things.
They don't receive an additional...
Are they allowed, though, to, are they allowed to have that in their budget for next year, even though they get it spent this year?
For our departmental budgets, like facilities, like technology, there is very little excess at the end of each year, because they budget so closely to their actual supplies needed or technology needed. Our buildings are where we see the most underspent budgets.
Can you tell me what the cost per student is?
I can get that information for you.
Ms. Deroff, I think, I'm trying to follow up on Mrs. Deroff's question. I think what she's trying to get at is, if you have a $150,000 budget this year, and you only spend $100,000, does your base drop down to $100,000, and you lose the 50? I think that's what she's trying to get at.
And maybe I was trying to answer that way. However, because the building, the departmental budgets are where we would cut that back if they were not spending it. We're not seeing unspent funds to that level in our departmental budgets, like facilities and technology. Where we see some unspent funds in any given year might be in a school building, like a Boyer Town, or Middle School East, Middle School West. We would not cut their budget back in the next year, because their budget is based upon their student enrollment.
That's, that's, because government budgets, in the whole, are a lot of times done that. If you don't spend it, it's cut back, your base is cut back the following year. I think that's what the question was about, if I'm not mistaken.
Patty, I don't know. Did I see anything in here about our capital fund balance?
There was nothing in this presentation. There was in the prior presentation.
Thank you.
How much total bonuses do we give out every year? Do you, is that a separate figure from the salaries?
That would be included in salaries.
Because, well, can we find out how much bonuses are paid out every year?
We can pull that information, yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Are we going to have any money to put back into the capital projects fund?
As we get closer to the end of the year, we, as we get... Closer to the end of the year, we'll share that with the board, where revenues and expenditures are ending up. The largest costs are going to be our final charter school costs, because that is a huge cost driver of our district, and the board can determine at that point.
All right, it's me again. I didn't see anything in here about the TURF.
There's nothing on the agenda tonight for TURF. There's... The TURF project would not be funded through the general fund. The TURF project would be funded through the capital reserve.
So, that would be part of our budget?
That's not part of the general fund budget.
Yes, so does that, that mean we're going to have a large expenditure that we're not going to discuss as part of our outgoing dollars from the district?
No, that's not the case, Mr. Brok... It was previously discussed with the board, and any future contracts that the district would enter into for the TURF project would be put in front of the board for approval. And as discussed previously, it would come out of the capital reserve funds of the district, not the general fund of the district.
Treasury report.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting to you a few highlights from the February and March 2024 Treasurers' reports. Starting with February, under local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $55,766.29. Earned income tax collection was approximately $251,606.87. Transfer tax collection was approximately $84,506.40. For state revenue, PDE basic education funding, we received $2,726,265. And for expenditures, in the category of salaries, benefits, and professional services, it accounted for 82% of our monthly expenditure. And for March, local revenue, delinquent tax collection was $264,169.98. Earned income tax collection was approximately $874,722.45. Transfer tax collection was approximately $86,282.50. And for state revenue, PDE pupil transportation, we received $748,736.53. For retirement contribution, we received $2,182,190.18. And for special education, we received $704,886. And for the expenditures, same thing as salaries, benefits, and professional services, it accounted for 75% of our monthly expenditures. And this concludes my report. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you.
We'll be looking for the Board to approve, a motion to approve the February 2024 Treasury Report.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we'll be looking for a motion to approve the Treasury Report for March 2024.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the superintendent's consent agenda, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the consent agenda as presented. We are looking to receive $300 donation for, from S. Height at BASH class of 98, and also to accept the donation of $7,675.97 from Gilbertsville Giant Feeding School Kids Program.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott. Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the superintendent's itemized agenda, the Administration recommends the Board of School Directors approve Policy 008 Organization Chart for Second Reading, approval effective April 22nd, 2024.
Zawada moves. Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, Administration recommends, the Administration recommends the Board of School Directors to approve the following personnel actions, including resignations, employment appointments, change of status, leave of absences, and supplemental contacts as per the attached.
Zawada moves. Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Epstein.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yeah, I see we have another custodian going.
Ms. Kratz.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's no one signed up for public comment period number two, so we're going to go to Board Comment. Ms. Updegrove?
Yes, this is for Patty. Back on the budget, the general fund expenditures, could you go into detail what the regular programs are and the special programs are, the ones for 65 million?
Regular education would be all the services provided in our regular instruction program for students. Special education would be all the special education services, so that, and each of those is broken, it's got the salaries, the benefits, contracted services, supplies. Each of those are broken down by major department, we'll call them, regular instruction, special instruction, and then again, at the bottom is broken down by, as a whole, for our general fund, our salaries, our benefits, our contracted services, and supplies and related items.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have a couple things. The Safe School Discipline Report, I know it's coming to the end of school, but I'd like to see that now if possible, and.
It's not available.
Why not?
Because it has to get compiled together, so that takes all of the buildings to provide us information? Are you, are you talking about discipline-related infractions by Safe Schools Report? It's not completed. It, it's something that Mrs. Kramer does work on with all of the schools, but it's quite the orchestration.
When are we going to get it for this year?
Do we ever provide it to the Board? Because I don't know that we've ever provided it in the past. Once it's completed and we're ready to submit to the State, we can share with you at that time.
I'd like the past three years of that then, please, of the report.
Does everyone want past three years of the Safe Schools Report at this point?
Hi, I would like to grab.
Do you want me to provide this?
For this year.
So for this year, I'm happy to provide that. Once it's compiled, I can certainly check to see where it is with Mrs. Kramer, and we could provide that to the whole group and, and put it as part of the newsletter.
I would definitely like to see at least last year's. And have it, have it available so I can compare it to this year's. That's one thing I want. Also, I would like to propose that one person from each region, and we do it on a rotation basis, when we have an exit interview, that a Board member is also there. And if you, like, I'll make that as a motion.
That would be personnel, and I don't think that that would be something, again, Mrs. Mintz, I don't believe that a Board member would be a part of an exit interview, that's proprietary information, that would be the ownership of our HR Director or our HR Department. What is your statement on that? The request is that they, that a Board member would like to be a part of an exit interview.
I agree with your position on that.
Are we allowed to see the exit interviews? The report that's being filed?
Again, that's personnel, and that is information that is protected, is my understanding. Mrs. Mintz?
Yes, I completely agree.
I will be doing further checking on that because it's my knowledge we're supposed to be allowed to see that. Also, after the past fiasco that was going on, I'd like to propose and make a motion that this Board go through a workshop, whether it be one or two, with the class, class of, Class for Board Office of Open Records. This Board really needs some guidance, and I was hoping Jeff to do it, but at this point, I'm proposing that somebody from the Office of Open Records comes in and sits down and does a workshop with us, and that is a motion.
From the floor, you need to have a majority of the Board, five votes, to support this motion, and then you bring forth the next motion. So first you have to have support of this motion. Call for a vote for the motion is to, Ms. Nyman is proposing a motion to have someone from the Office of Open Records to provide a training on.
Our open records, what we can and can't do under the Sunshine Law, all of it.
Do they do that? I don't know.
I thought, I was told they do.
So the motion on the floor is to have someone from Open Records to come in to provide training to the School Board with respects to the Sunshine Act and what are allowable, give me a word.
Exceptions?
Activities, thank you.
The Office of Open Records handles complaints about, in part, about right-to-no requests that are received. They handle things related to the Sunshine Law, things like that. Their state, their state office, that I don't know.
I think PSBA offers training.
Correct. So.
So we have a motion, do we have a motion to support?
Maybe we should find out if they do training before we vote on anything, for sure.
There's a motion on the floor with the first and a second.
You can ask the lawyer.
I think that we need to act on the motion which is on the floor, is my understanding.
So we have a motion and a second, and I will take real call vote. Mr. Zawada.
No.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
With no understanding of what we're getting into or who we're talking to, or any, anything along that line, I'd have to vote no at this point in time.
Ms. Dieroff.
Since we don't even know if it's available, I'd have to vote no right now.
Mr. Updegrove, Roger Updegrove.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Kratz.
No for now, I think it needs, we need more information. I know PSBA does trainings.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
No.
Five no, four yes. Motion fails.
Well, then it comes back to me again because we are not doing things properly here, and that's sad. So I will ask the legal lady that's on our line, I don't know what her name is anymore, if she can verify if Open Records does this.
That'll be something that I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Soltanic's office for. At this point, the motion failed, and I believe that there's more information that I need to provide, so we'll go back to Mr. Soltanic when he's back from his holiday.
Okay, that's it for now.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to have a directive for the Board on dress code. Since we hit the front page of the newspaper a couple weeks ago, I got quite a few calls. I, I'd like to know if we could have a dress code for the Board members.
Mrs. Dieroff, what are you looking for specifically as far as dress code?
Professional dress, I guess. I guess that would be called professional dress.
Are, are you looking for? I guess my question is, as I look around, I'm, I'm not sure if there's somebody that's not in a professional dress, or, or, I guess I just need a little bit more directive, or perhaps the Board leadership does, with respect to how we would like.
In the past, the men used to wear sport coats. I'm not saying shirt and tie, but they did wear sport coats, and we looked more professional. And I think if we look more professional, maybe our attitude would change, be a little more professional, I would hope anyway, thank you. So do I make a motion for that? Or is it something that we want to discuss?
I think discussion would be probably.
Amongst the adults here, the discussion probably would be the place to start.
Is there a policy for it already?
No.
We don't have a policy?
No. I thought we used to. I thought we had to have a policy, and I think the men automatically dressed like that. But I thought at one point there was a policy on, on, or dress.
There is, there is, if there isn't, there isn't, so we just have to discuss it.
Well, let's discuss it then. Does anybody else think there's a need for one?
I don't have a problem wearing a coat and tie.
Well, I, I wouldn't make it mandatory for a tie if it was me, but that would be very nice. I know, they always look very, very nice. So you'd be in favor of a dress code?
Be in favor of a coat and tie, a little professional.
What about you, Mr. Brophy? Look at the men first.
Well, it's, you can have a dress code, but what's your enforcement, what's your enforcement mechanism for someone that doesn't wear one? So you'd have to, you'd have to discuss that also, so if you're going to require it.
They'd take us all out for dinner afterwards if they don't wear one.
I'm not sure how that would work, but you would need, you would need some sort of enforcement, you would need some sort of, this is the minimum attire. That would need to be discussed and outlined, I'm not sure I'm ready to discuss that at, at, at part of a Board comment, but probably much more of a, maybe a, a topic.
So we should, you're in favor of putting it on the agenda for the next meeting as a topic?
That would be part of a policy type of a discussion.
So I should throw it back to the Policy Department Committee?
Pretty much.
You can make a motion and see what it gets.
I think at this point, we should give it to the Policy Committee then. I don't go nowhere. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not against it, it's just that, it's just that you would have to have, you'd have to cover those.
Right, I know, but you got to start somewhere.
So be, it would have to go to, in my mind, it would have to go to, to some sort of policy or at least a guideline. We have, we have Board Guidelines, correct, Mrs. Dorsia?
Well, you have Board Policies under the zeros, under local Board Procedures, but you don't have a, a policy that would be enforceable to, you know, what, what do you do when a, a Board member doesn't show up at Board Meetings, but they, you know, you know, can miss X amount of, you know, Board Meetings, we can't throw them off. So there's, there's, they're elected officials, so if, I believe a Board member would choose not to want to wear a sport coat, what would be, you know, the infraction? You know, nothing, because they're voted officials. So I think that if you would like to try to institute something, you know, certainly the, as the Administrator who works with the Chairs for policy, we can get some, if there's anything out there, or we can begin work at a public session on what we would like to put into it. But I, I think along with what you're saying, Mr. Brophy, is that there wouldn't be an infraction that you would be able to put upon someone if they chose not to wear a sport coat. So it, it really becomes.
I think if there was a policy there and they refused to wear it, I think that's poor sportsmanship.
I mean, you could go a guideline possibly.
That would be an administrative guideline, there's no way I'm enforcing that, what you guys have to wear. I have a tough enough time getting dressed on a Board Meeting night myself, so I'm not worrying about the nine of you, so.
Okay, just get it back to the policy.
We can go, we can go backwards and say what we can't wear, like, T-shirts, you know, require college shirts.
Give it back to the policy.
I mean, but, you know, business, business casual is business casual now, and most of the businesses are doing it, there's no sport coats. I could understand if we were sitting here and now had T-shirts on or something like.
Everybody else wears coats, suits and stuff, the Administration. We kind of look, and look at the other Board members, Board Meetings, other school districts have, got all, my tongue got all caught.
We'll review it, and I'll bring it up to the board, okay?
Put the picture up there if you don't look like this. I mean, you can, you can always do something, inform them.
Ms. Brophy?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Ladies, I want to thank you for the report, as usual. You did a good job. Thanks for keeping abreast of a lot of things, and I know you're going to be busy the next couple of weeks with graduation and everything.
I have nothing to add.
Our next meeting is May 14th, the Committee of the Whole Meeting at 7:00 here in the boardroom. This will be the night that the proposed final 2024-2025 budget approval will be on the agenda. May 28th is our Board of Directors' meeting, which is also here at 7:00.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Meeting adjourned.